To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of minutes from January 4th, open and executive session?
As written.
Do I have a second?
All those in favor?
Aye. Are we covering open and executive on that? What do we have to do to separate it? Done. Moving right along to communications and announcements. We will begin, is Brian here? Brian Conway? All right, great. We're going to begin with introduction of Brian Conway, our new treasurer and collector.
Good evening. My name is Kathy Darby, your human resources director, and I'm pleased to introduce you to Brian Conway. Brian is our new treasurer-collector. He started at Town Hall on January 4th and two weeks later moved to Osgood Landing. But before that, he spent five years as an assistant treasurer for the town of Natick. He spent three years as a division director and head of the library for the Haverhill Public Library, and he has a background in technology as well. So, it's been a very interesting and sort of fast-paced couple of weeks for Brian since he's been on board.
Initiation by fire, Brian.
That's it.
You're safe. There's a room full of firefighters.
Welcome to North Andover.
Welcome to North Andover.
Well, thank you. I'm appreciative of the opportunity and I've enjoyed my brief stay so far in the department.
Good. Thank you.
Best wishes and best luck of being, best of luck to you.
Say again?
I'm sorry, Dick?
I just said best wishes and best of luck.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for coming out on a cold night.
Well, thank you.
You don't feel what?
Just keep on popping these.
That's right. One of the most favorite things that we like to do, that all of us like to do, are swearing in new firefighters. The actual swearing-in will happen at a later date.
I'm waiting on Ray.
As Town Clerk Joyce is not with us this evening, however, Chris Dufrain and Dave Herbert are new firefighters, joining the North Andover Fire Department. Chief, you want to come up?
Can I stand at the center of the scene?
Absolutely. You can hold it like a...
My voice will carry fire. The first one is David. Could you come over, please?
Dave's been on the department eleven years, done a great job, been a tremendous asset to the department. He also has been an acting lieutenant for several months. Within that timeframe as an acting lieutenant, he displayed leadership qualities in what we look for in itself in Lieutenant McCarthy. So, he was selected to be, to move up to the ranks of lieutenant with the retirement of Lieutenant Fred McCarthy, the trickle-down effect. David is now lieutenant. So, with that, Dave's going to have...
My son, J.C. I'm great.
He's tall, isn't he?
Oh, yes.
That's what they say.
Congratulations.
The next individual is Chris Dufrain. We're not shaking hands. Chris has successfully completed, actually over his year, finally able to plug in the actual ceremony of his swearing-in, minus the swearing-in. Chris has been a great asset. He's a townie. He grew up in town. Does a tremendous job on the ambulance. Works with the crew, fits right in. Chris is going to have...
Chris is going to have the boss put it on.
I don't know if I would trust that.
Thank you both for your service and commitment to the town. While we're at that, we have a number of public safety officers that we will be recognizing this evening as well. Those who responded to the explosion at Dow Chemical, actually just about two weeks ago. Chief, if you would like to, again, explain what that situation was and...
Dow Chemical's facility in this town, very hazardous manufacturing process across the seas. It was a Thursday afternoon, probably around 3:00. We got the call via the, what we call the radio box. We got several alarms coming in the radio box. If that happens, you know you probably have something. So, upon arrival, Deputy McCarthy was first on the scene with the crew, and we found that there were actually five individuals that had been injured. One refused treatment, but four were seriously hurt. Four individuals that were seriously hurt were all, at some point in time, med-flighted into Boston facilities. Actually, one was med-flighted out of Lawrence General. This facility deals with a very, very hazardous process. It's a chemical, it's paraphoric, it's extremely dangerous. I think the plus factor in all this is that not only were the Fire Department, or was the Fire Department, and the police able to work together in a tremendous show of teamwork, but the Fire Marshals Group, between the hazardous materials unit, the bomb squad from the Fire Marshal's office, their investigators, everybody as a group did a tremendous job, a tremendous show of teamwork to make this incident far less serious than it really could have been. Again, if you knew this chemical, knew the dangers involved with dealing with this chemical, you'd understand what I'm saying here. It's really, it's a credit to all individuals involved, especially a credit to North Andover Police and Fire.
I think it's important that we recognize everybody by name. Not all, of course, will be here this evening, but in particular, not only Chief Melnichas, but Chief Gallagher, Lieutenant Charles Gray from the Police Department, officers Jason Wedge, Eric Seaway, Jared Lawler, Bob Hillner, Freddie Almanzar, deputy from the Fire Department, not only, again, Chief Melnichas and Deputy Chief McCarthy, but Lieutenant John Weir, Lieutenant Jeff Judge, firefighters Matt LaCola, John McCarthy, Sean Fountain, Scott Swanarsky, Gary Ford, Kevin Lundey, Jimmy White, Elizabeth Aminski, Chris Holland and Lenny Severino. And I think it's important that we also recognize the communication officers who were involved in this tragic event that day as well. Mark Gagnon, Justin LaCola, John Wood, Jonathan Bonanno, Gianna Barelli, and from our emergency management director, Jeff Coco, and senior operations officer, Connor Lincoln, and our transportation officer, Neil Hamel. I have been known to say more than once, and I probably will always continue to say it, that I find the public safety officers in North Andover to be the best in the state. And, as always, what you did that day in saving lives, and I know that you all feel you're just doing your jobs, but for us laypeople who depend on you in situations like this, again, the best in the state, and bravo to all of you, and thank you.
I'll just add to it, you know, we have people, when most people are running out of a building, our guys are running in. And when you're dealing with chemicals, you don't know what you're dealing with in most cases till you're inside, and it's true bravery for all of them. I mean, it was just...
If I just may, there was many agencies that helped us out that day, and it's too numerous to say right here today. They know who they were. We did send out thank you letters to all the mutual aid companies, the hazmat team, the State Police, the bomb squad. But I do want to recognize the people here from North Andover. These guys work with us all the time. The North Andover Police Department, the public works, the emergency management agency was tremendous help to us that day. But I want a special attention to these communication officers. A lot of times, they don't get recognized. A lot of times, it's the police and fire in the paper and things like that, but what they did that day was just tremendous. There were so many things going on in town that day, not just that incident, which probably was the largest, if not the largest, it was my largest incident I was ever involved in. We didn't realize we were going to be there for two days. But the communication officers, the four that were on that day, John Bonanno, John Wood, Justin LaCola, and Mark Gagnon, the amount of work that they had to do, getting all the resources that we were requesting, not just for that incident, but the house fire we had that day also.
That's right.
They had numerous mutual aid companies in, and I just wanted to publicly recognize you.
Anyone else?
I'll just echo your comments. They were wonderful, and yours was all right. Thank you for everything you guys do. It's amazing. And it's always, as I said in the past, it's always such a pride to see you guys come walking into a room in any, in any time of a situation, and it's always a calming feeling to see you guys come in and take care of a situation. So, I really appreciate all you guys do, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
I should give an update from, so we've been in touch on a pretty regular basis with the corporate office of Dow Chemicals. The facility is not, although it's open, it's not in operation, certainly not producing the chemical that resulted in this particular explosion. So, one, they certainly wanted to echo the comments from the board and others, that they appreciated the response by the public safety folks. They were amazed by it. And two, they continue to conduct the investigation and are not currently operating the facility the way it was prior to the explosion.
Thank you.
I don't care.
It's all right. People at home can hear him. He's in the microphone. A little noise, they all leave, but...
That's really, I think that says something. I didn't realize that that's where it falls, for Bill to, Lieutenant McCarthy to describe it as, Deputy McCarthy, Deputy McCarthy to describe it as the biggest incident for him to have to respond to in his career.
In his career. I mean, it was pretty...
I didn't realize that it fell in that. Obviously, it was...
Into that category, yeah.
I saw those ambulances, and he's right. You saw Andover, you saw Lawrence, you saw LGH. I mean, it was this parade of ambulances just coming down 114.
And then the helicopters. Then the helicopters, yeah. I mean, we, you know, and we didn't, I'm glad that he addressed that fact, that, you know, it's mutual aid, that we're lucky in the valley in particular, that we are there for each other in tragic situations like this. Although, could have been more tragic, and luckily, no one passed. No one lost a life that day.
It was still pretty bad.
Well, and again, I attribute that to our public safety officers. Okay, moving on to the Osgood Smart Growth Overlay District Review Committee update.
I just wanted to give you an update that the committee has been formed and received. I think Erica Forrester is serving as the defective chair at this point, is reaching out to the various members. Dick Fallon Court, representing the board of SLEP, and then members of the planning board, zoning board, and Conservation Commission have begun the process of beginning to meet. I would expect they'll have...
We have our first meeting next Monday night.
Great, next Monday night. What I've indicated to Eric, which I'm sure all the rest of the individuals understand as well, these will be held as public meetings with minutes, so they'll be made available to the public, and the owner will be invited to each of those meetings individually, so that if the owners of the entire zoned area have an interest in participating actively, they certainly will be able to do that. So, I would expect that this will take many months, probably north of a year to conclude, and ultimately, the committee will make a report back to the board.
Okay. Thank you for chairing that, Dick.
I'm not actually chairing it.
Oh, you're not chairing it?
Well, Eric is leading it.
Oh, okay.
So, I'm on it.
It's quite the task, so thank you, though. And I said Osgood, it's Osgod?
Yes, it's really the Osgod Smart Growth Overlay.
When can we change that name?
Can put that on the agenda.
Can we put that on the agenda to change? It's so awkward. I dislike it.
Think of something better.
Please do. I dislike it.
Yeah, it's just something odd.
It's odd, but... Job posting and vacancy log. All of our jobs in town are always posted on the website, and the vacancies are always posted on the website. Is there anything you'd like to update us on?
No, this is Sue Sawyer, who's been our director of health for many years, is moving on to a similar role in Tewksbury. We wish her well. She's done great work here. I think she had two stints here, brief departure and came back. We wish her well in Tewksbury. She's been a great asset. We're in the process of revising the job description, as is our typical process.
Right.
Updating it more than revising it. I would expect that you'd see in that job description some reference to having involvement with substance abuse from a public health perspective, where that's becoming certainly a more significant part of who we are. I think it's important that that role, as the director of public health, director of health, what I view as director of public health, have an involvement relative to the activities that are going on. Wherever we end up in terms of our participation in the area of substance abuse, that role needs to include that in the job description. It currently doesn't include that, but it will, and that will be hitting the market for that position in the next, say, week or so.
Great.
Yep. Also, I don't know if it's on the vacancy, but we have, we are moving forward with the deputy, excuse me, the Fire Chief Assessment Center. I'll have a date for you in the next day or so. That'll be then posted for everybody who has an interest in participating. We are on schedule for you folks to get the report back, the results of the Assessment Center, and the narrative that goes with it in advance of the February 22nd meeting. That's the night, if you may recall, that you set as the night for which you would interview the candidates who have applied or participated in the Assessment Center. So, those interviewed, that interview night will be February 22nd. I will let you know the exact date of the Assessment Center in the next couple of days, and then from that, then let you know when the deadline passes, how many people have chosen to participate in the Assessment Center for Fire Chief.
Okay.
And then I'll do the same with Police Chief as the time progresses. So, we're on schedule for that.
Great.
And we have till Wednesday to turn questions in if I don't remember.
Yeah, if you could, if you could do that, that'd be great. So, Santilli and I, Kathy Darby, will work on taking your responses and crafting what we believe is an appropriate set of questions.
Anything else with jobs? Okay, moving on to consent items. We're looking to... first one would be coming from Elizabeth Armstrong, and she has donated $500 to the Fire Department to be used for the purchase of actual firefighting equipment.
Madam Chair, move acceptance.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. As usual, I'm sure that a letter will go out of thanks and what have you. Okay. Moving on to $1,000 from Helen Condra to be used for support programs for female veterans, to be donated to Veterans Services, which I think is fantastic.
Madam Chair, move approval of the acceptance of $1,000 from Helen Condra, and of course, a letter of thanks.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. We have $100 from James and Maria Rosati to the Police Department towards any needs or services or materials that they may require.
Move acceptance.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
As well as letters going on.
This is not unusual for the Rosatis, and they're frequent donators, and it certainly doesn't go unnoticed.
No, it does not. I think it's great. A $25 donation from Chandra and Yusha Prakash to the Police Department to be used towards any needed services or materials that they may require.
Move approval?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to vote and approve to sign the settlement agreement with the town of Burlington.
So excited about this. So excited. Can we explain this?
Please do.
Oh, God. I'll try my best.
Good luck with trying to have...
I'm heavily medicated. I'm heavily medicated, so I might show what I'm going to say today. So as you may recall, under, I think, 32B, 9A, and 1/2, if I have the statutory reference correctly, the legislature, after listening to a blue ribbon committee on how to improve or deal with health insurance costs in municipalities, one of the recommendations they made in 2009 was to allow communities to bill each other when an employee left one community, went to another community, and then retired. So if I served 20 years here, and 10 years in Community X, and then retired from Community X, Community X would be allowed to build North Andover for the portion of my health insurance while I was served in North Andover. And arithmetically, it's a giant shuffling of dollars from one community to the next that, in which no one community, or the state itself, doesn't benefit, or the aggregate of communities don't benefit. So we may receive, we may bill communities for $8,000 to $9,000, and then receive bills from other communities. And it's a giant sort of transferring of dollars, and a little bit reminds me of the cat or dog chasing its tail. But someone or some group of people thought that this was the profound way to deal with our $10 million health insurance bill. The response by most folks in the leadership positions in municipalities was to ignore this 2009 component of the Reform Act for Health Insurance because it just meant we had to do work to get money, and in turn, we then had to pay money and do more work, and the net gain or loss might be a couple hundred bucks. So most of us in the business saw this as, not an unfunded mandate, but really sort of not a good use of our time, quite frankly. But there were some, a small minority of folks, who felt like they wanted to have literal compliance with the statute, and therefore, the town of Burlington being one of those, felt like they wanted to bill the communities who should be billed, and then receive the money that they would receive. In the end, that resulted in the town of Burlington suing a number of its peer communities for the amounts of money that it felt it was owed. In North Andover's case, that was $2,200 over three years. This is a $100 million budget operation, doing a lot of pretty cool stuff. But it's a little disappointing that we had to spend time on $2,200 over three years. But in the grand scheme of things, things happen, I guess. I'm doing pretty well. I'm medicating myself.
Yeah, yeah.
So in the end, what we've decided to do is pay Burlington its $2,200 and move on. It should be noted that the governor and his municipal modernization act has included the repeal of 32B, 9A and 1/2, under recognition by most chief executives in communities that the provision is not worth the time we have spent on it. You folks...
Do we need a motion for that?
We do need a motion to do that, yes.
I'd like to make that motion.
That'd be great.
To pay Burlington the money owed in pennies.
We can't do that.
Why can't you?
No, I don't think he's kidding, yes.
He'll deliver them, too.
No, no.
You can't wire transfer pennies? So we're going to move forward. The good news, again, is that the governor has recognized the...
Sillyness of it all?
The silliness of it all.
No, this should have been settled in a small claims court.
Yeah, just only slightly north of that. So we'll move in that direction, and off we go on to bigger and better things.
Do we have a real motion?
No. The pennies was good. I, you know...
Well, I don't know.
I will make note of that.
I'll do it for myself personally if you want.
I don't think I have a second on your pennies, though.
But you did get a chuckle.
You did, and we're with you in spirit.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion, I'm sorry, make a motion that the board of selectmen approve and sign the settlement agreement with the town of Burlington as presented.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. Do you need us to sign that this evening?
Yeah, we'll pass it around at some point.
Request to surplus vehicles from the Police Chief. Request from the Police Chief, rather...
Yes, the surplus vehicles, yes. We're replacing older vehicles with newer vehicles, as you would expect.
As we normally do, do I have a motion?
As we normally do, yes.
Madam Chair, I move that the board of selectmen approve the request of Police Chief Paul Gallagher, surplus vehicles number 314, 318, 320, and 335, per cause memorandum, to the Town Manager dated January 4, 2016.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Request to surplus wood chips.
Don't we love this? Anything that has value, we need to surplus.
From DPW.
Yes.
We get money. We've got money last year.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
They're worth money. They're worth money.
The DPW Director Bruce Toboda.
Where does he sell them to, do you know?
We only accept pennies, though.
The highest bidder.
Landscaping company.
They pick them up themselves? You don't...
Yeah, they come, they pay for them, they take them.
No expenses to the job.
Do you have a motion?
So Madam Chair, I move that the board approve the request of DPW Director Bruce Toboda, surplus wood chips, for his memorandum to Town Manager.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any discussion?
Any discussion on the wood chips?
We give Burlington the wood chips. Payment of...
Be now.
In payment, I like it.
On Thursday, January 24, the Lieutenant Governor officials from North Andover, Methuen, and Andover met to sign the Community Compact Agreement. The agreement was to be signed by the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen. However, I was unable to attend.
That's true.
Madam Chair, can I say that I did attend, and the Lieutenant Governor, despite the many communities that were present, the many officials that were present, she singled out our Town Manager as being one of the motivating forces behind this administration's move towards this initiative. So I think this is just another feather in the cap of North Andover, right? Best public safety in the state, best public servant in the state, dare I say, Town Manager, but really, she, I mean, to take the time and acknowledge him, I thought was, made me very proud to be there as a resident of North Andover. So thank you for your work in getting this not just out of the governor's office, but to our desks.
To the communities. It's fantastic, and this is why, this is why we have Andrew.
So I can sign Tracy's name.
So you can sign my name to things now.
Did you spell Connolly correctly?
I thought you said Lieutenant Governor.
There we go. Bravo. Right next to Aaron as well.
Hey, when you're short, you get to sit next to, stand next to Lieutenant Governor and Mr. Fasfoyle from the river.
That's Fernando.
Phil, where were you in this picture?
I was not invited to be in that. Oh, that's true, actually. Some of us have, you know, day jobs, too, so that does happen.
So that's the photo de jour.
That is great. Although I regretfully was unable to attend this wonderful signing, and I must say, you looked great on the front page of the paper as well. Looked great. We do need a vote to authorize the Town Manager to have signed that.
Madam Chair, I move approval on having the Town Manager sign this compact that was, you know, took a lot of work to get together, and it finally did, and congratulations. It's great.
And in all, and you seconded on, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
And in all honesty, the right person from the town of North Andover signed it, so thank you.
I can certainly say, as it relates to the compact initiative, which is meaningful for the entire region, so the Community Compact allowed communities to identify best practices that it wanted to implement over the next several years. You could identify three. Interesting enough, one of the ones we originally submitted to the credit of our staff here was one to look at some issues on the information technology side, and we received a call from the state's Information Technology Division to review this particular best practice. And after a prolonged conversation with Chris McClure, determined that our practices were better than the state's practices, and therefore, they wouldn't allow us to include it. So, which was fine, but asked if we would participate with other communities in improving their side, so it was a real positive. So anyway, the initiative that's the focal point of this Community Compact, which also the reason for the regional signing, includes, Methuen included the same language as did Andover and Salisbury, but endorsed by the rest of the Merrimack Valley Chief Executives, was an idea of enhancing the Merrimack Valley Means Business website and communication tool. We've spoken within this group, this group has been leaders in the idea of marketing Merrimack Valley. We often refer to the valley and Merrimack Valley and take great pride in it, and we really think there's an opportunity to market that from a business perspective, that there's no reason why, although there's not a lot of billboards, that a billboard or two can't welcome people to the valley from a business perspective. And there's no reason why a business which is interested in locating in Haverhill, or Methuen, or Lawrence, if they find a better parcel in North Andover, can't be encouraged to come here and vice versa. So we think there's a really great opportunity to brand the region beyond its natural appeal, to have a name built in, we don't have to make one up, to encourage regional business opportunities for folks who aren't currently located in the valley. And so we're excited about doing that. So not only did we involve ourselves in the compact, but we did so on a regional basis, which I know has been an important part of what this board has been interested in regionalization. So I was glad to see we had three ready partners, and by the way, the rest of the communities who weren't involved have already endorsed that concept with us. Lawrence and Haverhill and Newbury Hall have all indicated that they will be partners with us on that initiative.
That's great. That's great, and thank you again for all your effort and hard work on that. And I personally am quite grateful that the administration is well aware of who Andrew Mailer and the town of North Andover is, so thank you for that. Moving into licensing, do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I motion to move into licensing.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We are now in licensing.
Okay, we're now in licensing. So the first item on the agenda is the request for a livery license by Shahid Khan of 57 Maple Ave, North Andover, the property located at 57 Maple Ave. Certificate of Liability, Insurance, and the Vehicle Registration Certificate are completed and on file at the Town Clerk's Office, and we have a favorable recommendation from each one of the boards that were asked, including Fire, Police, DPW, and Building. The Police recommend, or request, that the license conform to all, at all times, to the Town of North Andover Taxi and Livery Regulations as written and adopted in June of 2002. Mr. Khan, would you like to say anything?
No, but basically, I'd translate.
Absolutely.
Basically, I've been driving for Uber almost like three years. I've been driving my private insurance. Now I'm going to have a commercial insurance with livery license later. That's only different than how you have.
Okay. Okay, so do I have a motion?
Second.
Any further discussion?
So this is an Uber vehicle?
No, it's my vehicle, but I'm going to be driving for Uber.
You're going to be driving Uber?
Yes.
You're going to be driving locally, or you're going to be doing mostly airport runs?
Depend, like, where is it going to be busy? If it's like a busy around the area, then I will do in the area. If not, then I will, mostly in Boston, because this is a busy area in Boston.
And I think last month, we had another member of the Khan family in front of us at 59 Maple Ave, so next door to you.
Yes, next door to me.
Okay, so any other questions or comments?
Wish you luck.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. So good to go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck. Okay, next on the agenda for licensing is a request from Merrimack College. Let me just get there. Probably got a nice yellow sheet in front of there. I could just go to that, right?
It's really difficult.
There it is. Okay, a request for Merrimack College for a one-day wine and malt request from Paul Galant on behalf of Merrimack College. The event is a welcome reception to be held at the Rogers Center for Performing Arts Lobby, Wednesday, January 27. Oh, that's coming up, 2016, from 3:00 to 7:00. All of the requested departments have given a favorable recommendation. Of course, the Police Department has requested that all people be tip certified that are serving alcohol. Is there anybody from Merrimack? I don't see anybody from Merrimack yet tonight. So I'll hear a motion.
Mr. Chair, move approval of Paul Galant of Merrimack College's request for the one-day wine and malt liquor license.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to move out of licensing?
Mr. Chair, second.
Motion to the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Back to you, Madam Chair.
Thanks, we are back. You're out of licensing. Verizon, under, no old bills, excuse me, no old business this evening, new business this evening, though, is Verizon Wireless, placement of small cell wireless communication antennas on some existing poles. Mr. Town Manager?
This information first came to us through our planning department. I think we're still working through and willing to hear it from Verizon about the role of this board, or the role of any of the particular land use boards from Verizon's perspective relative to the location of this accordment. I may want to talk a little bit about, I think you appeared before, the end of a zoning board for similar accordment. So if you can give us an overview of what's proposed, and then some sense of how you think this would proceed, then we could probably have further discussions from that point.
Sure, great, thank you. And if it might help, I've got some samples I could pass around. You could each take one, take a look. There are...
Probably have them in the package. I'll try to put them up.
Okay, very good. So my name's Tom Hildreth. I'm an attorney with McLean Middleton, one of the local attorneys for Verizon Wireless, and with me is Tim Yee, who is a real estate consultant with a company called Structure Consulting Group, and together we represent Verizon Wireless. We've been having conversation with your staff, building inspector, building commissioner. We met with the planning board in early December. We've been kind of trying to figure out ourselves the best approach to bring this initiative into the community, and we're having conversations with dozens of communities across the Commonwealth at the same time. And in each one, there's slightly different variations on the theme. What we're doing, this is a great place to stop, this photograph, is we're putting what we call small cells, or CRAN, or CRAN sites on existing utility poles. Verizon has been very actively entering into master lease agreements with all of the utility companies that own the poles throughout the Commonwealth, and we submit a license application to each relevant utility pole owner. They go out and do a survey of the pole, determine whether any make-work is required to prepare for the pole to be attached. They give the results to us. We decide whether we're going to proceed together. The site you're looking at here, I can't quite see the name, it's in the lower right-hand corner. Oh, it's CRAN 20. This is one of, I've got five here right now, that we're ready to deploy in North Andover immediately. And we have a list of about 32 that ultimately we have in mind, and it's going to be somewhat of an organic growth thing. We're going to install an initial cluster, and we're going to see what kind of performance we get, and then we're going to make adjustments from there. But each one of them will look very similar to this. It's a, it's a single antenna. It looks like a paint can, or two paint cans on top of each other. It's cylindrical, round. It's about 24 inches high. It gets attached, most typically, to the top of the utility pole. It's connected to the power that the pole provides. It's connected to fiber that's either on the pole, or will be brought to the pole by Verizon Wireless. There's a separate power meter on it, and there's a couple of little gray utility-like boxes a little bit lower on the pole, about 10 feet high, including a separate electrical meter, so that Verizon pays for electricity that each of these sites uses. So as we've been talking with communities, some communities have said, geez, an attachment like this on a utility pole in the public right-of-way, we think it's going to be electrical permit only, or building permit only. Or sometimes have said, we'd like to talk with you about doing kind of a town-wide license, so that, you know, you don't clog up our permitting process with a whole bunch of these things. But frankly, I think, after having spent more time studying the North Andover ordinance, that what I'd like to suggest is, your ordinance contemplates antennas being attached to utility poles. It's expressly, you know, baked into the existing ordinance, and it calls it a wireless communications facility, which is what it is, but it's, you know, on a much smaller scale than the typical new tower with 12 antennas and so forth. poles, it's expressly, you know, baked into the existing ordinance, and it's, and it calls it a wireless communications facility, which is what it is, but it's, you know, on a much smaller scale than the typical new tower with 12 antennas and so forth. But the ordinance has a path for it. It says that anybody who wants to do a wireless communications facility in town needs site plan review and a special permit from the planning board, and we, and we had a good meeting with them, and they seemed receptive to the technology, and they seemed open to, you know, maybe the standard special permit and site plan may be a little bit overkill for these projects, but they've got very substantial waiver power within the ordinance, and they can, you know, shape the application submission requirements, tailor them to the, to the impact of the proposal. So, I'd like to suggest, and we're gonna make the suggestion directly to the planning board, that we submit the application for the sites we have on the table now, the five or six sites that we know are certain, and see if they'll work with us to handle them kind of as a, as a batch, you know, at one time. All the abutters, you know, who would typically get noticed, will get noticed, but, you know, will come and will present, you know, it's common information in each case, you know, one utility pole's pretty much like another, and we'll show pictures in each case and so forth, and there's a picture of an actual one, I think that's in Amesbury or Salisbury, I can't remember. Amesbury, thank you. And so, that's what they look like, and that one happens to be, looks like painted red, and there's the equipment that you see that's a little down lower on the pole, that's where the radio signal gets processed, and that's where the independent power meter is. So, it looks very much, you know, like the utility, you know, accessory stuff that are on utility poles today. This would just be, the term of art in the wireless world is densification. We're trying to, I don't know if you've seen the, the new Verizon Wireless commercial where there's a bunch of animated people trying to all fit through one, you know, narrow door frame at one time, and they get clogged up, they can't get through, and so the, the commercial widens the door and the people can pass through. We're trying to widen the door of the network, you know, the, the data demands are more than doubling year over year over year, and it's just all the company can do to keep up with the demand, so this is a way to do that.
Now, there was a, a list of, I think close to 30, certainly north of 20 locations, but you're identifying five or six.
We've got, we've got these, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, that have been approved by our radio frequency group as, these are definite goes, and attached to one of these, actually we've got the list, and I think that may be in your materials as well.
For those of you in the digital world, can I, yeah, I'll take one of those packages.
Yeah, so, these are, yeah, these are, these are, these are five different examples of actual sites, you know, share.
Thank you.
Yep, and I think in the package, as we submitted, there was this, this page that's kind of a Google Earth view of the town, roughly plotting.
They're all different. You know they're all different.
The dispersion of the, we're all different.
Five different locations.
The five are different anyway.
And most of them logically seem to be situated here, as you'd expect, our country has some of them along 114, some along Great Pond Road as well.
It's in the package, it's the one that has all of them.
It's the one that has all of them is in the package.
Yeah, it's got a Google Earth map, and it's got a long list of the sites.
32 is what you're looking to do, right? But you're going to just bring the five first before planning board?
Yeah, well, so, my thought was, we've got five, we have clearance on, maybe there'll be six or seven by the time we actually file, but we would go with what we know we definitely need, run through the process with the planning board, you know, see how they like it, you know, see how it works for us, maybe after the process we say, well, you probably didn't need to have this, or they might say, we wish you'd given us that, and we can tinker and refine the process, so that when the next batch comes around, you know, we'll know, we'll be able to predict, they'll be able to know what is useful information to them, and kind of streamline, we're looking to streamline the process as much as possible.
So, on this Google map, on the Google Earth map you have, you've got, as the manager said, you have about 25, so, locations, what are the five, because I don't have all five in front of me, what are the five on this map that you're identifying right now?
You know, the name of the sites is on the cover page of each of the, of the plans, so this one here, for instance, is, you know, at this address, and so each of those ones that I just passed around has got an address.
So, 313 Salem, 532.
You've got a nice numbering sequence here, you don't, you didn't follow that on these documents? SCO2, SCO3, SCO4.
Oh, well, so, let's see, I think we've got 11, 12, hang on, sorry which ones.
Then there's 287, 361, Chicaring.
Is SC, SC 12 is one of them?
Yeah.
That's the one on Dale Street.
Yeah.
Yep.
SC 27 is on Chicaring.
Yeah.
SC 11 is on Salem. SC 30 is on Chicaring.
Right.
SC 12 is on Dale. So, I only have four.
And we also do one at the very bottom called CRAN 20, which is on, which is the one I'm holding right here.
The one on 114.
742 Plague Street.
That's that one.
Okay, that helps.
I have a quick question, why are you here?
It's a good question, so, I've asked them to come here, that's why. And the reason is, there still remains some level of uncertainty, although we appreciate we've got a little clarity tonight, that at least the planning board's initial response was they weren't quite sure how to fit. So, under our wireless communication bylaw, or the section of our bylaw for wireless communication, this isn't not what traditionally fits, right? We think of things as, as monopoles or cell towers in traditional ways, and this is a different kind of product. So, one, until we figured out exactly what the role of the various land use boards was, we're trying to sort that out. And two, a little bit different from my perspective was the aesthetic reaction, was that this, there's five or six in front of us, but 32 identified on the list, and if 32 becomes 64 becomes, like I do the math, 128, in terms of creating, widening the doorway. As a community, how do we feel about that, in terms of, you know, the noise created by...
Noise?
Noise, hold on, I don't mean that, it's visual noise, the aesthetic noise, not the literal noise.
Okay.
The noise created by adding more to our poles, so we worry about every place we put signs, we don't like the school signs that have two poles rather than one.
When there's four others right nearby.
So, I shouldn't have gone down that road, Rosemary, but they, you know, so, but you know what I'm saying, as we're adding more to the poles, and right now we're talking about areas, our heavy travel areas, probably a little less concerned, but if we start to get closer to neighborhoods, I just, I wonder a lot a little bit about the community reaction to more things.
Well, my, oh, I'm sorry.
That's why.
My other concern would be, this is one provider, this is Verizon, okay, so, I personally, you've got one located right next to my house, but I'm an AT&amp;T user, so obviously that's not gonna do me any good, where I'm in a dead zone. So, when, how long before AT&amp;T, I mean, I know you can't answer this, but how long for AT&amp;T comes before us with a similar technology and wants to put one on every one of these poles as well? So, now we've got Verizon, and we've got AT&amp;T hanging off the side as well.
Does Verizon own these poles?
I'm sure it's a mix.
National grid.
They're all national grid poles.
Not all of them, but most of them are.
So, the poles that you're using, for net, the, most of the ones that you're proposing to use are national grid-owned poles, and they've agreed to let you use them, is that...
Yes.
So, you contracted with them, 99-year leases, like what, well, I don't know if you can even tell us that, but to Dick's point, to Selecton Valencourt's point, are they, could they at a later date, do you have an exclusive with them, I suppose, if you do not?
No, no, but each pole's gonna have to be evaluated on a pole-by-pole basis as to its capacity. So, if you look at the picture of the, what was on the pole, you know, there's only one space at the top, you know, you theoretically could put one of these antennas lower down, but then you're getting into the power space and the communication space and the cable space, and before you know it, you're down, you know, too low to be of any use.
And now, now, this is uncharted territory statewide, I mean, it's uncharted, it sounds like for us, but you've shown us an example of one in Amesbury.
Yeah, and we're doing, we're doing, we're doing lots of them, we have hundreds of them, you know, actively presently in the office.
Now, how are, how are communities handling the enhanced value of those poles now? Is that resulting in increases, I mean, fees as far as, not necessarily fees, but even property tax values as far as...
Exactly, it just went, how do we benefit from that?
It's new enough, I don't know what the answer to that question is, you know, we pay, you know, the fee that we have to pay to the utility pole owners is regulated by both federal government and the state government.
So, you're, you're paying, you're talking about the fee that you pay to national grid?
That's right. That's right.
So, even, right now, the current, assuming that you don't put these on poles, your only alternative really is to put these antennas in existing structures or erect them up on private land, and in turn then pay, am I mistaken, fees or property taxes based on the current, assuming the current options that are at, are before them, I mean, if they erect a pole, they end up having to pay?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm, you know, I'm certainly not equipped enough to talk about the sort of business model here. I think using the existing infrastructure provides the benefit of using the existing infrastructure, so there's a pole, there's electricity at a pole, the infrastructure may include FiOS, cabling, or other infrastructure that allows you to connect. I think if they're adding poles, the complication is, they have to come back before you when they're adding a structure, it wouldn't seem to make sense within the, their business model to wanna talk about new structures.
Yeah.
This would be a lot around a level of density, because my guess is that I haven't looked at what, you know, what the amount of capacity of these particular devices, but it's not like a traditional monopole, it must, you must need a fair amount of these, right, triangulating signals to have a benefit. This isn't something you'd put one in a community of.
Not typically, no.
No. So, is there an exp, so, this help, feedback is also helpful, because it allowed me to put together a letter that I can feed back to the planning board as part of the site plan review process. Normally that happens afterwards, the planning board would meet with you and say, okay, does the board of selectmen have any input to that? So, this, this kind of feedback will be helpful me to do that. Is there, is there a long-term plan or business model associated with how many of these you would expect to be placed in the community, a limit that the board could expect in terms of the number?
No.
I think that that would be an obvious concern.
Yeah.
Five is 32, where is that?
To get, just so, to give you a sense of the order of magnitude, I mean, the fact that we've got 32 already, you know, one of my colleagues was in Dennis last week with nine, we've got, you know, six, we just started in Provincetown, I think we've got 50 in Lowell, there are 900 in downtown Boston, just to give you a sense for the, you know, compare yourself to those communities.
Are these considered cell towers, like a cell tower?
Well, not a tower, but it's definitely an antenna, and it's tied into the wireless network.
Are we supposed to test the radiation or anything?
Well, that was my, my next question about the emissions.
Yeah, so, the, one of the retired firefighters in the office asking me about it before the meeting, and I told, it was actually his wife, that the amount of radio frequency energy that comes from your phone is more than the...
That doesn't mean they won't protest.
I know that, I know that, I know that, I know that. Federal law has a limitation on, you know, municipalities regulating, you know, as long as we comply with federal limitations, and we're so infinitesimally small on the standard that it's never an issue.
Listen, if you wanna pay me and put it on the top of my roof, you're welcome to.
So, I feel the same way.
So, I'm getting more out of your microwave than, I have no problem, but there is a strong contingency of folks in town who have a fear about.
Which is partly why, which is partly why I am not a fan of the communities we have spoken with who said, geez, I think electrical permit only or building permit only is all you're gonna need, I really think you've got to have a process that has the public, especially the abutters, it's noticed, it's published, it's, everybody can speak and have their piece, and, you know.
I have a couple of questions, you know, looking at one of the pictures, it really didn't look like much that was securing this red cylinder.
I thought the same thing, too.
It was like on a little platform.
Snowstorm is gonna fly off.
So, I'm not the engineer, you know, we have a professional engineer stamped licensed drawings, they do a structural analysis of every pole and every mechanical attachment and so forth, and you, you've got a, I don't know what comfort you can take, you know, Verizon's a very large company, and it's got very deep pockets, and it does not want people coming after them for liability, because their stuff comes flying off of poles.
How much, how much is just one piece of this equipment? What's the cost of that equipment?
I actually have a few more questions.
Just to put this in context, because of the concerns about safety, how much is just one piece of this equipment, or how much does it cost? Could you put the weight, but how much?
I don't know the answer to that, honestly. You know, I, I've been doing traditional cell sighting for so long, you know, I tell people, one of those is a million dollars, you know, worth of steel and technology and computing equipment and so forth.
Because that would give me faith that it wouldn't fall off, but if it was only a $50 piece.
Yeah, but it's not just the equipment fill, it's the, it's the installation to get it out there and everything else, I mean, it's all cumulative costs, right? It's not just a piece of equipment, but it's gotta be installed.
And I would have to trust that Verizon is doing their due diligence to have these
things not popping off every time there's a wind, you know.
And our contract with the utility pole owners is quite rigid in terms of the standards to which, you know, we have to adhere, you know, to attach things to their, to their, to their poles.
But we, you know, particularly in, in the older neighborhoods, the telephone poles are just, they seem to be just growing, because now there's so much weight on the poles, that they're putting other poles across the street and tethering them in front of people's property. So, again, it's sort of the burden will again be on the more older established neighborhoods that don't have the benefit of underground utilities.
Well, we can't do this in neighborhoods with underground utilities, right? You know, we'd be looking to do something else, like we're also attaching to traffic light poles, to streetlight poles.
That one's a little bit more interesting to me.
Yeah.
They tend to be more secure, you know, more weight, I mean, the other problem that we're running is, is the tilting of the telephone poles, and so, my concern is, in order to make this stay up, stay up properly, depending on the weight, that they're now gonna be looking to tether the various poles, or put another pole and tether across the street, that's not a look that I think most of the people, myself included, and pretty much this entire board, we live in older established neighborhoods that it's telephone poles after telephone poles.
But they have to come to us to do that, right? If they're gonna stick them on a pole, they have to come to us.
They do, but, but I'm just wondering, okay, we want this, this, in this pole, and we say, yeah, that's great, well, now, now we're gonna have to tether it down.
Because it's so heavy.
Because it's so heavy.
So...
And why, and my other question is, why red? Don't we wanna make it look, don't we wanna make it look inconspicuous?
I don't know why that one was red, yeah, they're typically kind of...
It's North Indover.
There we go, so we'll do a red one, a black one, a red one, no, but honestly, you're trying to make it look inconspicuous.
They're typically the gray, the kind of dull gray, like you see of the Transformers, like, like the stuff that's down below, that's more typical.
Now, see, see, if you look at it, it looks like it's on a base, like it's a rocket almost, but...
No, you know what it reminds me of, like 1955, and it's gonna go woo, woo, and everybody used to run into the basement.
That's, that could come back.
I wasn't around back then, but I've seen movies of it, and that's what I got.
I've seen movies.
Black and white movies. Can I am?
My, my, I'm so confused. But right, doesn't it look like it's gonna, like, and we have to...
So, so, remember, we have, we, before we come to the community, we've already been to the utility pole owner, and they've gone out and done a survey of the pole and said, you know, is this pole structurally able to support what it is your proportion to do? And anything of the kind you're talking about would be shown on these plans, and we don't, we don't pick poles that require that kind of, you know, crutch or assist or additional, you know, guy anchor or something, because if they did, the utility pole owner would have to go out and secure those rights, you know, from the surrounding landowner, whether it's the, if it's in the public right-of-way, it's you guys, if it's on a private property, it's the, it's the fee landowner, and that's more trouble than it's worth. So, we're tending to pick poles that are not crowded.
That's the thing, I think for us, we've been down this road with national grid and poles, and they don't always, you know, I mean, I can see them saying, oh, sure, it's great, and then six months later they're to us trying to put a pole across the street because it's too heavy now.
Too heavy.
I mean, we, it's just because history has shown us.
Right.
I think it's a great idea, I, I mean, you know, for Verizon customers, it's, and it's innovative, and it's fantastic, I don't think it falls in our jurisdiction or purview to give it a yea or nay, or a thumbs up or a thumbs down, I think it's strictly planning.
Zoning.
I mean zoning, sorry.
I'd love to, I'd love, I would love to know...
Nobody's planning.
Yeah, planning boards, planning boards, special permit, grant authority.
Does a pole exist, there wouldn't be any zoning, but if you're not effectively set back.
Okay, so, it's just planning.